I call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Janice Toh.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Councilmember Schultz.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
I've heard from Councilmember Mayo, I know he'll be here, and I'm assuming Councilmember Schultz will be here, and if he's not here in five minutes, maybe we can give a call and remind him. Since it does happen, I got a call last year.
That's right.
Thursday nights are a little unusual.
Oh, my God.
Why don't you say here? Why don't you say here?
Say here.
Don't do it, don't do it.
Uh, present.
Um, I'll ask if there's any public comment, but I don't see anybody out there to provide any public comment.
None of them.
So unless somebody is hiding behind a chair, so we will move to budget work session. And does the acting city manager want to start us off on any preliminary comments on the work session or want to go right to police?
Very briefly, we've got two, um, two different kind of subjects. We have the police department and the Speed Camera revenue for the Speed Camera Fund as the first two items, and I'll turn it over to the chief to say what we've got in front of us.
And before you start, chief, I just want to double check. In years past, we have done capital items for departments as we do the departments, so that's a reminder.
Yes.
In case anybody forgets and we start to finish with police and get ready to move to public works and we haven't done capital, we need to do capital.
That's right, and what I have added to the cover sheet from the past are two items, I'll just let you know. Department highlights kind of at the top of the cover sheet, and I have incorporated references to the capital budget when it's appropriate within the cover sheet to try to help us, help remind us when we have those. Chief?
Okay. It has been too long since I've been here and spoke before and talked about some of the items on here. I will hit a couple of things. Get the right one. Our expenditures are up about eleven and a half percent, and we've moved a lot of our staff from Speed Camera, or half of the people were being paid out of Speed Camera, just about to the regular budget. You know, as we talked last time, we know that the Speed Camera Fund can go up and down, and there is no guarantee to it, so we moved those over. We also had an increase in personnel costs, they're up at 672,000. Most of that again is, well, I'll say about half of that is actually the moving of those positions, the other half is the increased benefit package, the fringe benefits, I think, are most of it.
So is there something that you can provide us that kind of gives us a sense of this much moved from one fund to the other, so it's not really that one's up by, this one isn't up by the full 600 and whatever, but it's really up by something else?
Yeah, actually, in the other one, you'll see that it went down.
Right, 182 or something like that.
Yeah, so.
But I, my sense was that that wasn't fully, that there was also capital in there, so I wasn't sure how to separate out the personnel costs that moved from one fund to the other.
Yeah, well, I think we did the salary, well, no, I don't have the salary savings on that.
There's two components, I think, to the, to the increase in the personnel line for the police department. One is for 3.26 FTEs from the Speed Camera Fund. We've also got the $100,000 additional to the police pension fund, and then there's the halftime position, which is the emergency management coordinator.
Right, so I would just find it very helpful if we had a cost associated with the 3.26 that moved from one fund to the other, so that we know what the real change is rather than just the shifting.
Sure. Yes, we have that, and I'll get it to you.
Yeah, I actually think we have it in the line item anyway.
So the halftime position is not part of the 3.26 FTEs is a different?
Right, we did not have that in the past budget, so it shows up for the first time in FY14 budget.
Yeah, correct. We've done, yeah, we've had a salary savings for the last couple of months. Our overtime, I wanted to touch on that for a few minutes. We're down in overtime in two of the bureaus, or in two of the divisions, but in operations we're up, and that's primarily, primarily because of staffing shortages, the storms, some other things. But we have no way, we had no way of accurately tracking where that overtime money was being spent. Everything's on paper. What we've done is we've added four lines in the budget, or in the, in panimation, so that we can track court overtime, which is a big one, we have very little control over, shorthanded callback type overtime, details, and some others. And if it works out, I've done this in the past, and that's how we could stay within budget, or at least say, okay, well, here's a reasonable amount, because this is what we're spending it on that's out of our control. At least this way we'll know where it's being spent, and we could look at it again in six months or a year and say, okay, this is where we're going to have to fortify the budget a little bit next time.
Yeah, sounds very helpful.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's really hard to say, okay, well, you spent the money, how, well, okay, we can go through everybody's timesheets for the last year, and it's not really practical, so I think this is going to be the best way to do it. We are in the process of hiring, we'll be back up to full strength, and I think like Patton said, all glory is fleeting, I think full strength is fleeting too. You know, the minute that we're back up to full strength, we'll be back down again. Somebody will get hurt or somebody will retire. We have two crossing guards that we're hiring now, we've got four officers in the pipeline. Out of that group, I don't think we're going to get more than two, maybe three, maybe. And if we do get that third one, then we'll actually be at strength, because we have one over for one officer that's going to be retiring soon and is not going to be coming back to the street. I provided the org chart for you, see how we've broken it down, we're actually having, you can see where the vacancies are. Primarily, we have three vacancies right now, two in patrol and one in CID and SAT team. We'll hopefully get back up to strength once these officers are hired and onboard. And remember, even if we get them hired in the next two or three months, it's going to be another 14 or 15 weeks before they're out there on their own, and then we can start filling the other positions. We've moved the community outreach around along with some of the responsibilities. What we did in last year's budget, if you remember, we did the, well, we didn't, I wasn't here, but we put a halftime police dispatch supervisor, halftime emergency management, and I talked briefly last time about how that would probably not work, as we couldn't find somebody that was really qualified or desired to do both jobs. So what we did was we actually moved over one person, our record specialist, I'm sorry, not our record, or a NCIC warrant specialist, is now the lead dispatcher. We've moved them into communications and still does their current job plus the additional dispatch responsibilities. That allowed us to take that extra position, wasn't extra, but the position of the supervisor, and make it a sixth dispatcher, which we desperately need during peak hours, so that we have double coverage when the phone calls come in and the critical events go out during our peak hours. So that's, we've moved that over, that's already been taken care of, so that's where you see that position. And currently, we have two dispatcher positions that are vacant at this point.
And you say peak hours, but you're still on 12-hour shifts, so it's part of a shift?
Yeah, do you want to talk about, the current schedule for the dispatchers, there's primary four shifts, and they're 6:00 to 6:00, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., or 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Once we hire the additional two staff members, they will overlap from 2:00 p.m. to midnight, so that during those hours, which are our peak hours, we'll always, as long as nobody called in sickers on leave, we'll have two staff members to take up the slack, plus the third person who's a supervisor, works a regular daywork schedule. So in the morning hours, they would be here from, you know, when they came in at 8:00 till the other person comes in. So for the bulk of the day, Monday to Friday, we'll have either two or three staff members in the office, and that office, it can become extraordinarily busy, and the folks that work in there during the daytime especially answer hundreds of phone calls and walk-ups and plus the radio and everything else that's going on, so it'll be really good to get extra bodies in there.
The gang unit and the municipal task force officers who are still remaining in those units, and we have moved, that was one of the positions in particular, we had moved over from Safe Speed into CID, since that's where he actually works and it's really where that should come from. The only remaining positions that are in Safe Speed now are the ones that are actually working in Safe Speed.
I think at this point, we can take any questions.
I noticed that Largent is T1, though he was recently cleared.
Yes, but, and I'd rather not, you know, talk about the personnel matter on the record, but he's going to be remaining in the position he's in, assisting in the property and evidence, until he retires in the next few months.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Regarding the dispatch supervisor.
Emergency management.
Position. You said that there's difficulty hiring someone who can do both jobs, which is okay, but still we're creating half a position here, rather than assigning that half position among, you have four command staff, yourself and three captains, presumably who have emergency management capabilities, both for planning and operationally. Would you explain, please, the creation of a halftime emergency management position, and whether that would be staffed by a halftime person, or whether that person, if you do hire someone, would be split, or rather, whether that duty would be split, how would that be handled?
No, it'd be, that position is halftime, because it really, for the size of the organization...
Wouldn't be the person who would be halftime, something else?
No, no, this is, this was the new position that we talked about a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
That would be halftime, part-time employee, but it would be somebody that has a background in both ICS, you know, coop planning, and dealing with the community issues, and being the coordinator with the county as well. Because it goes beyond just what the captains can do, I mean, they have, you know, they have a lot of other responsibilities in addition to that, and we needed somebody that's on the ground that actually deals with the emergency preparedness committee, as well as dealing with the county emergency preparedness department and the state and FEMA and those things. Plus, to keep those coop, those coop plans up to date is really a daunting task. I've got like eight big binders in my office that you really have to keep that up, and they would also be responsible for planning active shooter training, disaster training, doing the drills and that kind of thing.
The, I won't say you, because your tenure here, the police department, the city administration has redeployed staff, but Captain Corsi did cover, to the best of my knowledge, the majority, if not the totality, of those emergency management functions.
Well, he did, but that's why they asked for the position, was because really, the fact was, they needed somebody in addition to cover those. It's just, there's just, there's a lot of things that go into logistics and planning that go beyond what the captains can do. They have a lot of other responsibilities, and I just don't see it happening. Plus, there are people out there that have a background and the training in it already that we can hire for part-time position that would be more suited for it.
If I may, also, with Captain Corsi, there was a lot that was not being able to be done, working with the other department heads, doing exercises here in the city. It just, it was one of these things that he, he tried to keep it up, but it wasn't really done to the level that it should have been done, for us to be able to be very responsive.
So you obviously expect to be able to hire someone for a halftime position?
Oh, yeah.
It seems unusual.
There's plenty, there are plenty of people that are retired, either from the fire rescue service, from the police department, that basically that was their job, and they don't want to work full-time, but they still want to keep their hands in it, and they still have a passion for it, and that's what we're looking for. And that's, that's again why we didn't decide to combine it with the dispatch supervisor. We found, in my experience, and when I did some training in West Virginia last year, was you had a really good dispatch supervisor in charge of their 911 center in a small rural community, but he was terrible and didn't want to have anything to do with emergency planning or the drills, and he was supposed to be doing both. And then I found, and then when we did the interviews, actually before I got here, we found people that were really good in communications, and we found people that were really qualified in the other aspects, but they weren't really, they had no passion for the other, and they really didn't have the background as well. So I would prefer to have somebody that's just dedicated to it, and obviously, Gaithersburg City has a full-time person who used to be working, used to work for the county police, that's their full-time emergency manager for the city of Gaithersburg, and I don't see us needing a full-time emergency manager, I don't think it's a full-time job.
Well, Gaithersburg's three times our size, but, so what would you do if you didn't get the halftime position?
Well, things wouldn't get done, I mean, we can only do so much with what we have.
What things wouldn't get done?
Well, the logistics, I guess, for, you know, the equipment that we would need, the planning for disaster planning, the training exercises definitely aren't going to get done, not to the degree that we would like. The interface with the community and the emergency preparedness committee, and the outreach to the community members that they represent, just wouldn't be happening to anywhere near that degree. I mean, the, the planning that was involved in doing one active shooter incident that I was involved with during the summer, you know, required four or five trips for me to West Virginia with two other people, but it was 10 or 20 other people that had to get involved in this, and I wasn't working. So it, you know, for me, it was easy, but for the people that have full-time jobs, it's very difficult to be able to plan something like that and then execute it. And there is a degree of training, I mean, there's a lot of the NCR stuff that they have to know. They have to know the, and some of them are actually, you know, have master's degrees and college degrees in actually planning these exercises, there are degrees offered in that now. So I think that it would be beneficial to the city to have that level of expertise.
Does it require a full half, does it require a halftime position as opposed to, did you consider an option like splitting up duties among command staff or other staff, and then retaining a consultant for the very specialized things?
Well, the reality of it is, I mean, we can only split the command staff up as much as we have. I mean, we, we're, you know, our command staff, unlike the county police, Captain Bowers is admin, but he's also in charge of communications, he does all the purchasing, he does the budget, he, you know, he's doing a lot of the personnel actions, sometimes he's doing internal affairs stuff, when it's a case that, you know, somebody else, one of the other captains either involved in or cannot take care of. You know, Captain Freshcorn's the, you know, in charge of a whole bunch of other things, including investigations, plainclothes, the, he's our internal affairs manager, so he has to keep all those records and do all that, plus training. And then, you know, the operation supervisor is probably, you know, one of the ones that's the busiest, he's 24/7. You know, we can, we can always, you know, keep putting things on to the people that have it, but what kind of job are you going to, what kind of end product are you going to get? And I think it's really important that, especially, the recommendation of the emergency preparedness committee was to create that position, because they really felt that there was, there was a lack of preparedness coordination within the police department and the fire department and the community, and I think that's why they pushed it very hard during the last budget, to create that position.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here with us tonight. So you've talked about the halftime emergency preparedness person, and you also mentioned additional of two people in the communications?
Well, it's actually, one's, no, it's not additional at all. We took the dispatch supervisor position and downgraded it to just a dispatcher.
Okay.
We actually moved staff over from the administrative section, which was the NCIC warrants, NCIC entry, and she's also our administrator for all the people certification for NCIC and our trainer, and we made her the lead dispatcher in addition to those duties. We could, we felt that was a good fit.
I guess it would be helpful to me if you could tell me what, what are the additional personnel, because there's more than just a halftime emergency preparedness person, right?
Not in the budget, no, no.
The three positions were, three positions that were regular police officers, or other positions that were under Speed Camera.
Under Speed Camera, okay.
Right, yeah, we, the only additional position that we've asked for in FY14 is the halftime position.
Okay.
Everything else was existing, or we just changed it?
Because what gets confusing is when you look at things like CID, and it's up by three, and, so it's figuring out these shifts, moving people in from the Speed Camera, how that affects it, and seeing what kind of the net change is rather than the fund change.
Right. Basically.
Thank you. Oh, I also wanted to ask you your opinion of accreditation. We're not an accredited police department?
No, we're not, and I had actually gone and testified for Rockville City for their accreditation the other night, for Chief Treschek, Chevy Chase, we also fired off another for them. Yeah, there was a trend nationally when money's tight, one of the first things that goes is accreditation, but what I will tell you is that we still follow all the accreditation standards. I think that's important, regardless of whether we have Kalia come out and do it, or we just maintain those standards ourselves.
But there's no independent verification or review of that?
No, but I gotta, I gotta take the wrath of Jack if we don't comply with it, and we are, we are in compliance with Kalia. I would, I would explore the possibility of reinstituting it, depending on what the pricing was.
I guess my question is, you have to take the wrath of Jack if, but who brings it down on you if nobody's, if nobody's checking?
Well, we do, we do self-police, and like I said, our policies do follow Kalia, and we do keep very close tabs on our policies to make sure that the staff follow those policies. There's a lot more accountability in this job than my last one, and because it is a smaller department and we're right down the hall from each other, we see what's going on every day, so the accountability's there. Again, I'm not opposed to Kalia at all, but I do have a problem, you know, it is a private organization that comes in and does it, and they are for profit, they're not doing it for free, and if we can accomplish the same thing, then that's fine. If we really want to be accredited and the pricing is reasonable, then I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I have no opinion that it would have to be Kalia, but I think that some independent review is...
That's pretty much it, the only game in town, though.
Right, if there was another way to provide that oversight, I'd be interested in hearing about it.
Well, and some of that does get done, because we have the audits, and we have the financial, the fiscal audits, we also have the inventories, we also review all the forms that Kalia pretty much is going to nail you on, is the prisoner processing, things like that, and if you want to expand on it.
We have a number of things that we're required to report to the state as standards, whether they be for juvenile processing, citations issued, there's a number of NCIC audits that we're subjected to every year, so we do go through a regular audit process that's either provided by the city or through the state compliance records. So I think we do a pretty good job of staying, self-policing ourselves and staying in compliance with all the standards, and we regularly update our general orders, probably on a monthly basis, as we realize things are needing to be tuned, they're corrected and pushed back out again to the troops.
And I'll just add on to that, that the, with Kalia, I mean, they're, they're doing gold standard evaluations now, where they're, instead of checking just the paperwork, they actually go out and ride with the officers, and they're making some of the certifications, like the sheriff's department this year, and so did Rockville City, they did the gold standard certification. Next year, I think Sheriff Darren told me that they would be doing the paperwork one to make sure that they're staying up on their paperwork, and then the next year, or next three years after that, they would probably go back to that. Like I said, I have no issue with Kalia in particular, I don't have anything against it, but it is a budgetary issue. But it's not just the cost of Kalia, it's the cost of the staff resources that we have to spend to make sure that everything is in the, in the place it needs to be for the Kalia inspectors when they get here, doing the mock inspections before the inspectors come out. It's not just a process, you know, you're in compliance all year, and you really have to get everything together in a package for them, so I know when I worked for the county, I mean, that was pretty daunting, and they would put five or six people, seven people sometimes on it. I think Park Police has two or three, when Gaithersburg does Kalia, they have a full-time person that does Kalia, and then when they get ready to do it, they put two more people on it, sergeant and another officer, so they have three staff members working on it. Frankly, we just don't have the staff right now.
Thank you.
And you keep saying budget, would you be willing to just put a round figure of what it might take?
It would be a wag, and I really, I mean, I know the county spends three, like, close to a couple hundred thousand on it, on a large agency like that. I know Chevy Chase doesn't spend very much at all, because in most cases with Chevy Chase, you have a situation where everything's an NA, because they don't do it, they're not a full-service organization, and they rely on the county for most of their, the things that would affect their Kalia inspections. I mean, their general orders are their general orders, those have to be in order and in line with Kalia, but prisoner processing, facilities, security, all those things that Kalia will check, they don't do. So, and likewise, Rockville City is more full service, and so is Gaithersburg, but they're not independent as we are, where we have to have pretty much everything the county does, but on a much smaller scale with no staff. So I think Chevy Chase was like three, three to 6,000 for three years, which is not a lot, but again, for them, it's pretty much checking the blocks, NA.
So for us, it might be tens of thousands?
It could be, it could be, and that's not including staff time. And I could explore it, I could look into it, and I have no problem doing it, I was actually thinking about it after I went to Rockville's. I just, you know, when it comes down to, you know, do we want to buy a car, do we need to buy a radio, or do we want to be certified by Kalia, I think it's more important to have the equipment for the officers. I think it's more important to have the equipment for the officers. If the money's available and it's a reasonable price.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a debatable discussion, you know. To some the other might be more important.
And I guess it's, it's hard for us to figure out kind of the cost of the time of the staff to do it.
Yeah, at least initially, because until you do it, you really don't know what's, you know, where you're going to wind up and how much it's going to cost you because you're going to have to backfill people because it is a full-time job to do, to get ready for a Kalia inspection.
So it sounds like it's at least one full-time equivalent.
At least. And right now, we-
But it shouldn't be that hard if you're already doing all the things that-
Well, still, yes, it is. Yeah. It's, you don't want to spend the money for Kalia and then have them ding you on little things that you just might have missed. And you have to do the mock inspections. So you have to have everything done just like they were the real inspectors coming in before they come in.
Okay. Enough time spent on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
With regard to the part-time emergency staff coordinator, whatever the position's called, I mean, in the case of a disaster or a real emergency, would that person's job be, put them in a position of leadership or critical coordination because they are the person that is connected to all of the Montgomery County? I mean, you know, if we have a big, big problem here, does that guy or gal become the, kind of like a critical staff person for you to have on, have there to, to help lead?
Absolutely. And what I found is, and it's also, that person's responsible to create those relationships before the disaster happens so that when it does happen, they can make the phone calls. They know who they're talking to. You know, it's, usually it's too late once it happens to start making friends.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And, and yes, I mean, they have the expertise to be that coordinator. They may not make the final decisions, but they are the coordinator. And I think it's important to get somebody that's, that's on-site here during those emergencies that can do that.
That answers my question. Thank you. On page 44, your uniform crime report, you have it spread for four years. And I noticed that in the total Part Ones, there's been a decline from 2009 to 2012 of about 16%. Personal crime has dropped a larger percentage than that. So my question is, and we're aware that these numbers have been declining. Chief Rikuchi mentioned that from time to time. But my question is, is that do those changes in UCR crimes, that when they start to get fairly significant, does that change your budgeting? Does it change how you?
It may change how we deploy and what we actually, what duties that we may be able to expand to. But the numbers here, I mean, you know, when I look at this, I mean, you've got to remember, it's such a small number, a small sample. It's very difficult to draw a valid conclusion on why we're, we have a drop of from 54 to 42. I mean, it's not a huge drop. Percentage-wise, it is for robbery, but that doesn't mean this year we're not going to have an increase. And we just don't know. Since we don't, we don't have that crystal ball, we can do some protective policing, but we just don't know where that, that robbery's going to take place next time, which side of the line on potty branch it's going to be. The reality is, yeah, it does, it does affect us fiscally. But I would use caution because we don't control, that's the variable we don't control.
Okay.
Keep trying, though.
We try. We try to keep the lid on it.
On page 48, you talk in your measures about hours of foot patrol and hours of bike patrol. And one of your management objectives there in operations is to do increased hours of both of those. I'd just be curious for you to elaborate on the bicycle and walking patrol. The reason I ask is that when residents think of community policing, sort of, you know, in a sort of a layperson's approach, they sort of imagine the, the old cop on the beat, kind of the thing, strolling down the sidewalk. And, but I, times are, this is, this is 2013, not 1937 or something, with a guy walking down the beat, swinging his baton. And so I'm just wondering what, how you see the bike patrol and the foot patrols working? Because obviously, some places, those are appropriate ways of doing policing. And in other parts of the city, it may not make much sense at all from a practical point of view.
Well, the bike patrols can pretty much go anywhere in the city. I mean, that's, it's not that big. So unlike, you know, where I used to work, I couldn't put bike patrols out because they'd have to drive to where they needed to use the bikes, and then they'd have to drive somewhere else. And it just got really old very, very quickly for the officers. I think it's an integral part. What happened, you talked about the 1930s and 40s where the cop on the beat twirling the nightstick. When I started policing in the 70s, by then, we were in an air-conditioned car with windows rolled up and insulated from the community, and we responded to calls. That's all we did. Those of us that, you know, had some background in city policing, you know, might get out of the car. But the majority of people, especially in Montgomery County, most of the officers were insulated in those cars. And that's not the way to do community policing. You need to get out of the car. You need to walk. You need to get on those bikes. The bike patrols are very effective. They're silent. They're quick. They have the added benefit of the health benefits for the officers as well. And, and by increasing it, I think you get a much higher sense of visibility, and you have actually a pretty good chance of catching people sometimes on the bikes. It is a little harder to run calls, but, and so you do need the full staffing to be able to get, get those officers out on the street when your staffing is low. You're not going to be able to put the bikes out, you know, leave, vacation, whatever, and obviously weather. But we have new officers. We are putting on a bike class probably at the end of this month. That's the plan. And we have a lot of newer officers that, that want to go through that training so they can ride.
Okay. Then with regard to foot patrols, do you put, use those pretty much like in the commercial?
Yeah. Those are generally, generally limited to, well, not necessarily. There's the parks as well throughout the city. But, but generally, it's going to be in more commercial areas, Old Town, New Hampshire Avenue, University Boulevard, that kind of thing.
Not your residential?
No. I mean, it's, you know, it can be done, but generally, it's going to be done in the more congested areas or areas where there's apartments. You know, I'm in favor of vertical patrol, where you can get into the apartment buildings and go up and down and actually check hallways. We actually have some people that do that.
Do you?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
It's easy for you to say, get in.
I use the elevator. But, but yeah, we do have them.
We're talking about in the door.
Huh. That's interesting. I didn't know that.
Yeah. Actually, it's, you know, New York City, major cities like New York where they still have enough staff to do foot patrol, they do vertical patrols. It's routine, especially in your hotspots, obviously, in places, you know, we do have people on, you know, we walk Maple Avenue. They do walk the buildings.
Then I think the last question that I have, maybe, is this, the victim witness coordinator on page 49, I see that the hours are changing from one full-time equivalent to .8. Does that mean that there's?
Did we change that? You know, that, we, actually, we've just discussed it because she's made a request to go to part-time. We think we could probably do it, but we were going to take the other position, I think, the property and evidence and make that full. But I didn't think it was in here. I didn't think we had done it.
Because from the description, it sounds like this person who holds that job's got to, you know, escort victims?
Yeah, she stays, she stays very busy, but, you know, we're willing to work with her schedule if she can get the job done in those hours.
Okay. So this is to accommodate and?
Yeah, this is not because we don't have the work. It's to accommodate the employee.
And then one other thing I think is that on the following page, under measurements, where you say number of cases closed, and this is just for my edification, and then the number of cases exceptionally cleared. Can you explain that, those terms as to what the distinction is?
Yeah. When a case is closed, it's usually, well, there's several ways you can close a case. You can close a case by arrest. You can close a case by being unfounded, where it's investigated, the crime didn't occur. And those are the two main ways that you close the cases. Now, we've arrested most of the burglars that have been plaguing the city over the last couple of months. And we know from their method of operation, what they're taking, descriptions of, from what citizens have seen, you know, in the neighborhood before or after the burglaries. We know they're the same guys that did it. We can close cases exceptionally because we know they did it, but we don't have enough to charge them. We may have probable cause to even arrest them, but we may not have enough to get a conviction, and the state's attorney may not, may not want to even charge them. So often, we close cases by exception.
I see what you're saying.
You know, if the defendant, if the defendant's dead, we have a murder and the guy's dead. It's murder-suicide, then, you know, you know, what are we going to do? The guy's dead, so we, we can't charge him, so it's closed by exception.
I see. Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
And I'll just piggyback on one of Councilmember Schultz's questions. On the, on page 48, on your management objectives, the one that I didn't quite understand was manage the use of vehicles to obtain better mileage. I thought, is that car mileage, fleet mileage? Is that non-hot seating? Kind of explain that.
No, actually, I think it's more spreading the mileage amongst the cars rather than getting, you know, somebody who lives close to the city that just drives, you know, five minutes to work and, and so they're not putting-
After a while, switch them with somebody that goes long distance.
Somebody with a higher-mileage car. That's one of the things that we're looking at doing.
So make them last longer?
Yeah. Well, yeah, or some will be burned out very quickly and others have to, you know, will be here 10 years with 30,000 miles on it, which is unacceptable.
So the guy that lives close and takes care of his car loses, has to use the beat-up thing to somebody else who are-
Well, that's why we want to rotate them before they get that bad. And generally, the fleet cars are the ones that nobody wants to drive anymore.
Well, everybody, you know, one of the reasons for having the take-home cars was, you know, the people would take better care of their vehicles and, and so this kind of defeats that.
No, no, these are still take-homes. And then you rotate the, the higher-mileage cars into the fleet as well. So they're not take-home cars now. They're your poor cars when they get older and beat up. And the thing is, your resale's still better on them. So, I mean, it's not just a question of the officers taking care of them. It's also what we get for them when we get rid of them.
So it's, it's kind of a preventive, preventive approach?
And that was at the request, I think, of PWU. They would, they would like to see us try to manage that mileage a little bit better.
Okay. Thanks. I knew there had to be an explanation in there, but I wasn't sure what it was. Councilmember Daniels coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief and Lieutenant, am I right, Captain?
Captain.
I'm so sorry. I apologize.
Not a big deal.
It is a big deal.
It is a big deal. It's a very big deal. I'm going to jump back to our emergency preparedness, part-time person, because I spent at least three years on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. And I invite the whole council to go to just one meeting and find out what, what gets talked about there. We dodged a bullet this year, campers. We had the, you know, Captain Corsi resigned, and then there were, there were the derachios. I mean, there was one, one Friday night not called deratio, then there was the Vow One. We didn't have the big snow. We didn't have any snowmageddon. We were really lucky because we didn't have anyone in any position to handle emergency preparedness for the city. And I think if you, if you just even go to a meeting for a minute, you're going to find out you've got a county person, Bob Jones, you've got fire, oh, gosh, he's going to kill me.
Tom Horn.
Tom, thank you. Thank you. Sorry, Tom. You've got someone from Washington Venice Hospital. You've got someone from Washington Venice University, plus community members. And, and the chair of the committee is actually the, the individual who works all kind of disaster for the, for the Red Cross. We are really lucky. We have a volunteer committee that does that. Without, what I said last year when Captain Corsi retired, I said, we got a big hole to fill. Whatever he did, as little as he did, because there was so much, he did it really well. He had relationships. He knew who to call. He knew what to say. He was right on, because he was here during snowmageddon. I mean, he did all that. Plus Irene, plus, you know, all the, all the dead wood that's laying all over the city. So I want everyone to really consider that part-time position. It is hugely important. Not going to be used all the time. We, you know, we just don't know when. You're going to need to grab it. And, and, and those relationships have to be in place because he could pick the phone up and call anybody in Montgomery County and get stuff done. I mean, I know the staff knows that. I'm sure you all know that. It, and I knew it because I had the opportunity to work with him and the committee. It's, it's not a, it's not a minor job. It actually is a pretty major, major, major job. When it happens, it happens in great gusto. It's sometimes, like this year, the deratio was the worst, and we were able to, Public Works was able to handle it and, you know, fairly, well, really well. You know, everyone, I attacked Pepco on the street, stuff like that. So we appreciate that. But I want you really to take a look at that expenditure. It is well worth the dollars that are, that are, that are in the budget. And, and we have, and something the city can really be proud of, it is a full-service police department. I know, I always told Chief Rikuchi, you got to say, "full-service police department." It may not be, it may not be accredited necessarily, but it's full service and something the city should really, really be proud of. I can't stand up good stuff about it. So you all, I kind of wear my heart on my sleeve. You know where I come from on all these things. So.
If I can say a couple, a couple words about the emergency management position. If we have an emergency, we've got really good staff. We've got skilled department heads who've been here a while, and, and they can handle the emergency part of that. We've got good connections. We do have relationships. What we don't have is the day-to-day training, the day-to-day practice, the bringing the new staff up to speed on these processes, getting them trained on the web ELC stuff. There's, so obviously, if we have a bunch of different crises, we're going to be burned out on that, and it would be very useful to have that position. But it's, it's almost more important in between the crises to have that training and the practice and making sure our materials are, are in place. We have the meals ready to eat aren't expired, all the various kinds of things that just, that do take some, some diligence. And, and that would be very helpful for us.
And Tacoma Alert, I mean, there are certain alerts that Captain Corsi, I think, handled through the county. And if you were hooked up to Tacoma Alert, you knew off of your cell phone what was going on. And I know everyone doesn't have a cell phone in the city. And if we don't have electricity, you don't have a cell phone either. But it was truly important. I think there was another program that we maybe had to drop was seniors calling in or the police department calling seniors who signed up. And maybe we just didn't have enough seniors.
Well, actually, we started it back up.
Yay. Yippity-yip. That's a big yippity-yip.
We just had to get, we had to get a community policing coordinator back in place to be able to handle.
It's, having the opportunity of taking the junior police academy or citizens' police academy really opened my eyes up to what they do on a day-to-day basis. And the other thing that's awesome is do a ride-along. It's, you know, it's easy to, you know, oh, I already did a ride-along. I've done a couple of ride-alongs. But you forget. You forget what a ride-along is like, what they have to do, all the little tinsy things that each police officer has to do when they, when they stop a car. There are a bazillion little miniscule things you've got to check on so that you're, you're not, put yourself, you haven't put yourself in harm's way. It's, it's a really pretty exciting experience. You have to be quiet, though, sometimes. It's hard for me.
No comment. Councilmember Mael.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight. A couple of simpler questions. I think in our public works budget, we report total vehicle miles, either total vehicle miles or total gasoline gallons used. And I just, to follow up on the mayor's comment, I noted that you guys had, you mentioned vehicle miles. But if it was possible to put together a total miles driven for the whole fleet, I'd be interested in something like that. I don't know if you guys track. You know, you do? Okay. I'd be interested in that. It's, and partly because it relates to foot patrol, you know, it's, it's sort of comparable to, you know, total miles traveled through the community on foot, on bike, in vehicle.
Well, that, they'll give you total miles. They're not going to be able to give you a mileage in the city, but that kind of thing.
All those trips to Rockville. So that's the first question. The in lieu of police funding dropped from 2.8 million to 2.5 million in the budget. Do we have that, is that a, is that a-
I'm sorry, which?
On the, on page, the opening page of the budget, we have the- On the, on page, the opening page of the budget, we have the in-lu for police.
Oh, yes. That's an interesting subject.
I'm glad I asked.
The county in providing us the same amount of municipal tax duplication funding as last year divided the funds differently, but the total amount comes to the same amount.
So somewhere else in the budget is a larger number.
It shows a higher number, even though that's not how, if you did a formula, it would come out.
And so this is based on the county executive's proposed budget?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And just remind me, last year for the in-lu police amount, did we get the amount that was in the proposed budget?
Just, yes, yes, we did.
Okay. Thank you. The uniform crime report, those actual or projected figures for 2013, so we have that last column, which is 2013, but I didn't know.
They're projected.
Okay.
It better be projected.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I just wanted to check that. There's an increase in the crossing guard in-lu amount, and I was just wondering if...
That's the same reason.
Same reason.
Right. Basically, the police number went down, but the others went up.
Okay. And then, we talked about getting the county to cover, or potentially to cover, the crossing guards at the junction, and I didn't, and that was going to be based on the, sort of, the crossings delivered. We had to, I think we had to document the number of crossings in order to then apply to the county for...
I don't know the status of that. I'll double-check.
Okay. Can we follow up on that?
Yes, absolutely.
If we haven't applied yet to the county, do so, unless we're way off on the numbers. The last comment I had, and it's, your budget happens to be the first one that comes up, but it's really across all the budgets. I note that sort of throughout the budget, fringe is up more than wages. So in the police's budget, it's up by 25 percent, wages are up by 14 percent. So you've got roughly an 11 percent rise. And at least in the police budget, that's not uniform. So, you know, in the chief's line, it's a, it's 40 percent increase, 48 percent increase in salaries, but an 81 percent increase in fringe, whereas in criminal, it's a...
Well, some of that's movement of the bodies. In Jack's case, he was moved over to that position from safe speed, and he works in the office. He always worked in the office of the chief, but he was being paid out of safe speed. That's part, that's not the entire package, but that's part of it. That's a good portion of it.
But I'm just trying to understand why fringe, first, is going up by so much, and second, why it's going up quite unequally through a different...
I'll have to double-check on why it's unequally. However, the part of this has to do with the extra money paid for the police pension because that goes for the officers, but not the other staff. So that we're giving, we pay a very large percentage of the wage of our police officers towards the police retirement fund. And so if you're not a police officer, then you don't have that much going to that. So that explains some of the difference, probably, between some of the different divisions. I would think that that's the largest explanation.
And healthcare, I think, has gone up about seven or eight percent.
Right. We've got healthcare's gone up, workers' comp has gone up, but I'll look into the differences among the divisions.
Okay. I'm going to keep asking that question, so if you look into it and just really explore it and help me understand why, there's very wide differences from program to program, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah, I noticed the same thing, like in DPW, where in some cases where salaries have gone down, you know, the...
The total amount for salary.
The total amount for wages has gone down, the total amount for fringe has nevertheless gone up anyway, and I was curious about that.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmitt.
Thank you. I have one general comment I think would be helpful. Wherever it says adopted to estimated actual FY13, and there are more than one line items that are associated with the total dollar amount, this is throughout the budget. Is there any way you could break it out so you could say that, you know, personnel is, you know, 25 percent of that total amount and whatever the other cost is, so we could know exactly what the total is? And there are more than two items.
Perhaps we can talk afterwards, and you can show me, and then I can make sure that that information's provided.
Chief, just a few questions. I'm a big supporter of community policing, and I'm glad to see that the bike patrols are up. What is the cost per patrol? And do you anticipate, like, you're going to do university, will Flower Avenue be part of that?
What do you mean by, just bike patrol the cost?
Yes, but, right.
Well, I mean, they're there whether they're in a car or in a bike, so...
So it doesn't matter?
We're not adding additional bike officers.
Okay.
But when we're fully staffed and we have the capability of putting one or two out on bikes on every shift, then, you know, they're just doing a different duty. So it's, there's no additional cost, other than the uniforms and the bike, which we have plenty of bikes.
Okay. And I see that, I think it was, hang on one sec, bear with me, 2011, there were 148.5 hours for bike patrol, your projected 2013 is 125. I know you weren't here in 2011, but do you have a sense of why it was that many more bike patrol hours? And is your goal to get it up to that amount or surpass it?
Well, and also, some of it is weather-related, some of it is staffing-related, as the staffing went down and it went down. Plus, we had some significant weather in some of those years. I can't tell you what historically, why it was, you know, 145 that year, other than the fact that, you know, we may have just had more bike-trained officers that year than we do the next year. I have no problem having them out there as much as possible, it's just a logistical question that's going to be based on the number of bike officers trained per shift, how many people are working that day because people are relieved or training or they're hurt. And we have to maintain the minimum staffing for the cruiser patrols, but when we can get people out, they're going to be out there.
And how do you determine what parts of the city will receive bike patrols?
Generally, they're going to ride in the places where there's more crime and there's more need, but that doesn't mean they won't hit the residential neighborhoods. If we're having a burglary problem in a particular neighborhood, we're going to put bike patrols there because they can be very effective in sometimes spotting that suspicious activity that you're not going to see in a car, especially in a marked car. The business areas are always a place that you're going to put bikes because they're conducive to it. The university, the college, those are places where you could put bike patrol. So, you know, and it depends on which BP officer's working that particular day as well.
You mentioned on Maple that some of the officers do verticals on the apartment buildings. Is that also the case on Houston Avenue?
Yeah, well, yeah, they do.
Okay.
But we do a lot of other enforcement over there as well with plainclothes, it's sometimes more effective.
Because, you know, I've had some issues over there, so I just wanted to make sure we're deploying as many resources as possible.
Yeah, well, you know the squeaky wheel, and that is a squeaky wheel, so it does get a lot of our attention.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. I think we've run through that section. Are we ready to go to capital on police, or do you want to do speed camera fund? Want to do speed camera fund and then do all the capital?
We can do speed camera first, and they each have some capitals, so then you could do capital together.
Yep, that's fine. So we'll go to speed camera fund.
Okay. And a lot of this dovetails into what we already discussed. I mean, the, some of the reductions are 25 percent, personnel represent 25 percent of the expenditures, but that expenditure's gone down. We pulled three people out of the safe speed fund. I was here a couple days ago, or a couple, last week, talking about what we're going to plan on doing with the speeds, the safe speed corridors now that the state legislation's dead for another year.
Yeah.
And hopefully, you know, we won't have a major independent city in the state of Maryland that screws it up for us. The speed, the safe speed program will still be in existence hopefully next year. I was at a Maryland Chiefs meeting yesterday with the superintendent of state police. We looked at the Maryland statistics and Prince George's County in particular, and some of these other jurisdictions that have had state speed cameras now. And fatal accidents are just down considerably, and it is contributing to the slower speeds. That's the only logical conclusion. But we have to really be cognizant of the fact that there's, half the legislature's ready to just pull it out from under us anytime that there's going to be another mistake. So that being said, it's such a tenuous program at this point that, that was our major reason for pulling those bodies out of there and putting them into the general budget. It just, it made sense. The three positions that are left are the full-time civilian employee and the two traffic officers that assist with safe speed, the sergeant and the officer. And we thought that would be an appropriate place to put them, as that's where the funding is, that's what their job is. And it makes it a little bit more solvent. We, you know, we talked about the overestimation in this FY. One, the speed cameras were doing what they're supposed to do, the reduction, all the reasons why it reduced, so we came up with a much more conservative figure for next year. And it may increase with the mobile cameras, we don't know. We really don't know what's going to happen.
And it's hard to predict what's going to happen with the...
With construction.
With the bridge rebuild.
I can guarantee you, Carol, it will be a no-go for the cameras. I mean, it's...
Right, but I'm thinking New Hampshire first.
But New Hampshire, it's, you know, who knows? We just don't know. The bottom line is that we have to be, you know, somewhat conservative with the estimates and use the program as it's intended.
Did the chief's talk any about trying to publicize more the reduction in the deaths because of the reduction in speed?
You know, not specifically, but, and I think they should. I actually do think they should. I think they should come out with an awareness campaign, but I think right now they're trying to tread lightly on the whole issue of speed cameras because it was such a hot-button issue at the legislature. And the last iteration of the bill, which we thought was going to pass, really wasn't going to create a lot of heartburn for us because we already complied with most of it, and we have five more years on the contract, so it really wasn't going to make a big difference for us for a new agency or one that was...
I'm just thinking about the publicity and...
Oh, I agree with you. I think, I think that it should be publicized, but I think they're trying to keep the hot potato, you know, off the radar for a little while until the session dies down. I'm just guessing, I'm not on the board, it was my first meeting.
Then maybe in the fall.
Yeah. I would hope so. And I would hope that they're gathering the data that they need to support it. But I honestly think they probably did present a lot of that. They were there burning the midnight oil. Captain Didoan from Montgomery County, Prince George's County representative, I don't know his name, and Maryland State Police, they were there burning the oil at the legislature. And it was, we almost lost it.
I know.
Do we know why we didn't lose it?
Well, we weren't going to lose it. They actually came out with a fairly decent bill that was okay.
But does anybody know why that just didn't...
They just, the session closed and they didn't go far.
They ran out of time to consider all the bills that are on the table.
Yep. Get down to the end and some things go through.
Midnight, they turned the lights out and went home.
I doubt that, he just forgot about it, Billy.
It was...
Saved by the bell.
And there was, there were different opinions and different forces working in different directions.
Okay.
Any other questions about the actual operating budget for speed camera? And if you can look at the capital?
Yeah, do. I'm just curious here on this page, the main page of the speed camera fund, it's all about expenditures, but there is no revenue line on that page to sort of say, this is the actual adopted and estimated and proposed proceeds entering that fund.
Yeah, we put the revenues elsewhere. I can understand that being confusing.
And I've noticed that in some other of the parts of the budget that I happened to glance, peeling, just those sections that we're looking at tonight, and I think it would...
The revenue's on page...
Page two. Well, and it's also on the second page of this.
Yeah, but, okay.
I understand, I understand it'd be useful to see it in that page.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm hearing that, that it's in this binder.
But I appreciate that having it on the same page would be useful.
It really would. Thank you. Okay. I persuaded.
Yeah. The revenue for those projected...
It could even be, if there's time, to just give a key that says if it were here, if it's not here, it's on page 25, and for the other ones.
Okay. And we did put it in the cover page for tonight, under the fiscal impact.
Which people didn't see until tonight.
Right, which came late, which is about one and a half million dollars.
Thanks.
Okay, let's do capital.
Whoa, which is my question?
Whoa, sorry, I didn't see that.
One might be a capital-related question. But the first one is, God, I just forgot my question.
It's scary.
You can come back to it during capital.
The, well, one question is sidewalks, is there no longer any money from this fund going into sidewalks?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's all out of the general fund.
So we're down to 300-ish thousand dollars for police capital, which we'll get to. That's it.
Blue.
And, oh, I'm sorry, I remembered my question. There's no revenue from the new cameras projected into this budget, so we voted to establish the safe speed corridors last week or two weeks ago. There will be one or two more cameras at some point in the year, but there's no revenue projection from these. You know, a question in my mind for my colleagues is could we or should we identify some potential priorities for the use of those funds during this budget process without actually obligating them, obviously, that would then allow us to come back through the year and say, okay, so we had said that if there was more money available in the speed camera fund, this is what we might do. Now we've got that for us. So, anyway, that's it.
And we might do that depending on what we do with the capital items in the general fund budget.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, come on. I keep trying to get to capital.
The speed cameras, the movable speed cameras at Boyd and Carroll, are they, they're up and running but not, or not?
Oh, yeah.
They're up and running and they're producing? Did anybody think about maybe moving them up the street a little bit?
Well, we talked about that last time. It's not a question of being able to move them, it's a question, sometimes it's topography and the angles and the public right-of-way, and it just may not work where it's, and this was the best possible compromise that the vendor said they could get the cameras to work.
Because it's like, you know, everybody hasn't caught their speed right at that space. Up a little higher at Sherman and Mean, or maybe they're, you know, they're zanging along.
They had to find a place where they could actually physically put the camera that would actually be able to work, and that, you know, it's radar, radar is limited, especially, well, the one's radar, the other one's not. But the radar cameras, if you, for those that know about radar, the wider the angle from what you're shooting at, the slower the actual speed is going to be measured. So you could be doing 60, but it may only show 55. So it always errors in, you know, it's just, it's the Doppler effect, but it always errors in the favor of the violator because that's just the nature of radar. So it has to be put where they can put it.
Okay.
And that was the problem.
Because I'd even maybe moving it down to Lincoln would might...
We could get them to regrade the road.
Yeah, or do something like that. Okay.
We'll get you out there holding it.
I'll hold my blow dryer.
I wish I could find the picture because, did you, you saw the picture, didn't you?
Of me with the blow dryer?
No, the guy that, somebody put a head on one of our speed cameras.
Oh, really? I didn't see that.
Tin head with eyes. Did a lot of work into it, too. It wasn't just a little sloppy.
Did you get his picture?
Hmm?
Yeah.
He wasn't moving fast enough for a picture.
Yeah. There, there's, yeah. No, no.
Yeah, don't go there.
Yes, let's go to capital.
All right.
The blue tabs.
Well, blue tab, no, I've got, mine's orange, so.
Oh, well.
What page is it?
111.
Under capital outline, yeah, 111. And the police and the speed camera items are the first two sections on that page.
Some of the errors.
Rick, do you want to mention the cars and?
Yeah, I'll let you do it.
Okay, we have a fairly simple capital for this year. We, we don't want to get too extravagant. We have patrol car vehicle replacements in the budget this year. We also have a replacement for the park enforcement officer's vehicle. He's currently driving about a 1997-
Ranger.
Ranger. So we're, we're going to get him a new car this year. The biggest expenditures in the field radio equipment, we've talked about this before, the county has upgraded their system, their, their backend, and this is the year we have to make the switch to, to the APX 6000 system radios. So that's, we've been doing it slowly, a little bit every year, but this year we have to complete the project before the county changes out the hardware and we no longer function. So that's a big chunk of money. It'll, it'll complete all of the vehicle car radios, plus our portable radios that we carry with us. So that's, that's all comes out of the, the SafeSpeed funds. We also have some replacement funds for mobile computers and some dispatch console equipment, and all of that comes from SpeedCamera funds as well.
And you may have said, just remind me on the, on the radio equipment, is that still an 800 megahertz? Or is that 900?
Uh, it's 900.
It's 900?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on capital for the police? Councilmember Mayo.
This is really more of a general question for the city manager. I'd really like to see a summary for past years as well. I'm, I'm not missing that that's somewhere else in the budget, right? But something that was, for example, say, police vehicles, police equipment, you know, the, the big overall summary items and what we spent in 2013, 2012, 2011.
Okay, so you want to see a past history of how we spent on vehicles?
Yeah, this is, I think it's important to look at shift over time and how our capital expenses are going.
And I think the only, the only issue with vehicles would be that when they implemented the take-home car program, there was a mass perishes, so you're not going to see a really good idea until we're well into this. It's going to be stacked in one or two years.
Was that like 2006?
But I'm happy to-
Okay, thank you. Does that make sense? You look like you have a question about that, Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, no, I think that the institution of patrol vehicles was a long time ago.
Yeah.
It was 2007 is our first model year of take-home cars, and in that year we bought 15 cars. And we started this FY, starting trying to flatten out that bump. We replaced a small number of them this year. We'll replace another small number of them next year. And, and hopefully what we'll have created at the end of like about a three-year cycle is to have taken that 15-year hump, brought it down to a reasonable number of four or five per year for, for kind of the duration after that.
Yeah, it's not that I'm skeptical of any of the broader items here, it'd just be good to see trends between Public Works and police and other uses. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Is there a plan with regard to the kind of vehicles? Police, patrol cars, are you shifting between brands, you know, manufacturers or from hy- into hybrids at all, or is, or do you, is it just not that simple?
And I, I can, I can tell you that for the patrol officers, hybrids would, would not work. They need the full police package with the full police brakes. Even for us, sometimes the hybrids, you know, the brakes don't hold up and things like that when you're running priority. But for the patrol vehicles, it's extremely important. What we are looking at is going to all-wheel-drive vehicles. The Ford Interceptor is all-wheel-drive. Chrysler doesn't have one yet, you know, for the Dodge until I think later this, this model year, whether it ever shows up or not will. I mean, they make it in the civilian market, they don't make it in the police package. And we really haven't looked at the Chevys because they're, they don't have all-wheel-drive either. And, and the, the more appropriate patrol vehicle for the Chevys is a, is a six-liter engine and we really don't need it in the city. So we're, we're mostly focusing on the Fords right now because they've given us good service. They're very highly rated cars, pretty decent on gas, and they're all-wheel-drive, so it's not only the officers being able to get around during a snow emergency or bad weather, it's also getting into work, too. We do have the, the K9 vehicles, we've downsized from a full-size sedan to the, basically the intercept, Ford Interceptor and the, the crossover vehicle, the, what are they, the special purpose or-
Utility.
Utility, the interceptor utility. We've gone to three of those for the three K9 officers. It gives them more room for the dogs and the equipment that they need to carry, and it's basically the same thing as the, the police interceptors that we're buying for patrol.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looks like no more questions on capital. So it looks like you all get to go home.
Wait, wait one?
I know that's what you're used to, but-
Thank you.
Let's take a short break, and then we'll do Public Works and Stormwater and Capital for Public Works, and then we'll go.
Projects or just funding available to use to institute whatever programs come out of that action plan recommendation.
Sorry, the Brendel contract is totally paid in FY 13?
We have $40,000 that we're anticipating we'll be using to complete the contract in FY 14.
Okay, so that's separate from, that's separate from the 150?
Plus the 150, yes, so those, those two items are individually funded. We also added some money for architectural services for some staff space improvements within the community center. In addition to that, and as is every year, we have a list of what we call special projects, repairs, or things that need to be done around the building that are also funded in this budget. There's going to be some work done on the HVAC system in the third floor. When the new building was developed, it, all the returns just go up to the plenum, they're not piped to the machine, so it just creates this superheated surface above the ceilings of all the spaces, and it co-mingles the different airs from the different, three different units that we have cooling, or heating.
And it was designed that way?
It was designed that way.
We saw it on our tour. You showed us on our tour.
Oh, we may have. At any rate, part of what we have for a project next year is to start tackling that, so three of the rooftop units will, we plan to do ductwork so that we take the returns directly into the, into the system rather than just have them diffuse into the plenum. It won't address everything, but it'll get a big chunk of that third floor taken care of, and we think in that way we'll be able to save some money, energy efficiency, as well as also regulate the temperature and, and enhance the comfort for the staff that are in the third floor. We also have a plan to totally repaint and change the teen room and the game room as part of a recreation department request. So that's, you know, a different color scheme, a different plan for those two spaces. They need an update, they've been those colors for a few years now and it's time for, for an update. We're also going to be replacing the teen room floor that's currently carpeted and probably not an appropriate space for carpets, so we're going to be changing that to some other type of material, hopefully a sustainable material, whether it's vinyl, wood, marmolium, who knows? That's part of what we'll be asking the architectural services folks to recommend for us. Also, there's a project to relocate the vending machines from the basement to the hallway and rework the electric in that little window that used to be the finance office. So that's a fun, a project that's funded out of there. And last but not least, do minor work in the library on the hot water heater, which is old-school style, and we want to move to an instantaneous gas-powered hot water heater for those minimal uses of hot water in the bathrooms and kitchen of the library. I'm sure you've seen the write-ups, I, I don't want to go through and repeat. People have specific questions about our general operating budget or personnel expenses. Again, we're not adding staff in this year's budget. We did add staff position last year, the, the staffing level remains unchanged for FY 14. And I think that about covers it. In terms of some other additional program costs, we do have some vehicle expenses that I can go through when we talk about, through the capital budget, the vehicle and equipment that's going to be purchased this year. The rest of the budget primarily is just maintenance of existing services, updating of, of equipment on a, you know, planned basis. We did have some bump up in our temporary labor line due to a, per-hour price increase for our temporary labor contracts, so some of the increase you see in temporary labor, or you probably don't see that direct budget line, but there's been an increase as a result of going from the old rate to the new rate, which will be phased in July 1st. The budget does not include any cost for continuation of the food waste pilot program at this point. I just felt like we were right in the beginnings of it. Don't really, I wouldn't, didn't really want to pin down a number because I knew it would be just totally hypothetical in terms of how fast we roll it out, whether we go citywide, whether we continue to use the Baltimore facility for compost operations. We've had a lot of information come to us about companies that are looking to locate composting facilities, so I think the market is really changing. So our pilot goes through end of July, beginning of August, and I think once we start getting through into the summer, we'll have a better sense of what we might be able to do, and we'll bring that back to you guys, you know, directly and have a conversation about where we want to go with that in terms of entire program, as well as have the whole cost-benefit piece of it better defined in terms of what we think we can reduce of our waste stream, whether or not we can get any efficiencies in, in routing changes or vehicle, you know, an increased number of households per vehicle per collection. So we still are really in the early stages of that. So there isn't any money in, for that continuation in the budget.
What about the larger recycling containers? I'm sorry, I didn't see that in here.
I didn't put that in. That was a pilot program where the council added funding to purchase 100 of those last year.
Do you have any judgment about success or?
I think those folks that picked them up were quite excited about having them.
It seemed like you had a lot more demand than you had containers.
Yeah, well, with just 100, that goes pretty quick, and, you know, we pick up 3,300 households trash, so 100 is a teeny-weeny percentage of that.
So what about putting some money? I guess that's up to us, but would you be receptive to it?
Sure, absolutely, there is definitely support for that. I think it's, you know, not for everybody, but for those folks that generate a lot and would like to use those types of containers. I would encourage us to-
Would you suggest a number?
Well, we could come up with a number, or the other thing we might want to talk about is whether or not we want to do some kind of cost share with folks so they could purchase them. We do sell trash toters at cost to residents. That generally rates in the $50 or $60 per container. What we ended up paying for the 30-gallon recycling toters was, I think, $40-some dollars each. So, you know, whether or not the council wants to, us to purchase it entirely, do a cost share with residents, I think there would be interest for folks, you know, in a reasonable cost share kind of situation for them to purchase it.
Is it worth, it, it's not more hassle than it's work to collect money for them?
No, no. I mean, we're kind of set up for that. We collect money at Public Works for a variety of different things, and now the city also has the ability to collect money with credit cards, so at, at this point, it's fairly, fairly routine. But I know for-
So if we wanted to purchase them in, say, a 50-50 split or something like that, it would be easy to do?
Yeah, yeah, would be easy to do, and we probably, you know, I would recommend that, you know, just to keep things flowing, we, if we were going to purchase some, we do, you know, a couple of hundred every quarter so that we're not having to store, you know, 1,000 containers and figure out how to get them out, but just do it and let people know the next order time will be such and such a date, and if they're interested in that, we could do that.
I'd be concerned about inequality with lower-income homeowners, but that's something we'd have to discuss.
Yeah, I do know, I was at a Maryland Municipal Public Works Officials Association meeting today, and the city of Bowie last year went through a process where they provided recycling toters for their residents and saw a huge jump in recycling tonnage. It's my estimation that we wouldn't have that kind of impact here, but then again, we haven't done a study, so, so we don't know.
Yeah, a study would show whether the reduction in the stuff that's thrown into the regular waste stream, you know, to what extent that pays for-
Right, or basically if people say, oh, I filled my recycling container, therefore all my recycling now goes to the trash. I mean, for those folks that I anecdotally, you know, talk to or see, people that put their stuff in the recycling container aren't going to put their stuff in the trash, so I'm always surprised by the findings that has definitely come in some communities where it's made a huge difference in terms of, of tonnage collected. They also used their, I was quite surprised, they also used their Maryland Administration Energy Efficiency Block Grant money to, to do part of the cost of the containers, so I was like, darn, I wish I'd thought of that. I said, how did you sell that to the Energy Administration? But they said they were quite excited about it, so, because hard to find any money-
Aluminum is highly into, energy-intensive, for instance, to produce, and if you can get stuff recycled and so on.
Right, it was basically enhancing the recycling program was seen by the Maryland Energy Administration as an energy-saving process. So just little side anecdote, on that same, while I'm on the MEA, the city did, April 5th, complete an application to the Smart Energies Community Program. There's a possibility, if our application is accepted, that we'll be able to receive funds that have to be spent by December of 2013, and we'd be coming back to the council if we get accepted in the program. It's kind of similar to the community development block grant money programs in that we'll, based on population, we'll get a certain amount of money that's available to us as a participant in the program. You have to choose two of three program areas to achieve your goals in and develop your goals. They're either a 15% reduction in energy use in the city buildings over a period of five years, or to increase your onsite renewable energy generation to 20% of your, of your electricity use by the year 2025, or to reduce your vehicle fuel use by 15% over five years. Of those two, I think the first two are the most likely for us. I think we're pretty well on our way to the 20% onsite generation with the solar panels we have here at the community center, as well as Public Works. So we're, we've got our fingers crossed on that, and if the state approves our application.
What's the estimated amount of money that we would-
At $20,000 to $50,000. They, they basically wouldn't give a real set amount because it depends on how many communities they accept into the program and then how the money divvies up. But that was the rough estimate that, that we got from the few conversations we've had. That kind of covers what I had planned to talk about, Public Works operating budget-wise. I don't know if you want me to jump now to capital or if you have questions on the-
I think we'll, we'll do these first, then we'll do capital. I've got just a couple of quick questions, and this might be a question for the city manager. Looking again at in lieu of, on page 53 on the Public Works budget, that one jumps hugely. Is that still part of that shift? So they, they moved it not only within the police department, but all over?
What they did was, we had received the additional amount for the police, in lieu of police. What the budget analyst did was take the total amount and then divide it by the percentages of the old form, of the old formula, so that the extra amount that we got for police-
Got distributed.
Was distributed to the other categories.
Gotcha.
Well, it was distributed across categories, but-
Yeah. So it was, it was, it was done last year as police, and then they just distributed it through all of the tax differential, tax duplication.
That's right.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I want to make sure because I couldn't find, I couldn't find the bulk of it in the police. Page 62, streetlight costs are down.
Streetlight energy costs?
That's what it says.
Yeah, some of that is our county electricity, you know, our, our purchase agreement with, through the county, we had, we get a better rate, and every two years they go out to bid again, so we have seen some improvement on the-
So it's the rate, not-
Kilowatt rate, yeah, not a reduction in streetlights themselves. There was a slight change from the relamping that Pepco did, where they removed all the mercury vapor lights in the city and, and changed them to high-pressure sodium. Those have a slightly lower monthly maintenance cost, so that's part of the reason, but fairly modest reason. I think the more significant reason is the improved kilowatt rate that we get with the group purchase of power.
And, and whether a streetlight is working or not, we still get charged the same rate because it's per, per lamp, per fixture?
Yeah, per fixture, number of lamps, based on the type, and it's a calculated number of hours based on dusk to dawn, changes month to month.
Okay. And then a question on page 66. My thought in looking at the performance and workload measures was, gee, if we keep adding new gardens and, and existing, and we enhance existing gardens, aren't we going to kind of outrun our staff's ability to maintain them? And I thought we had heard that already a couple of years ago, and it looks like we've accelerated the, the projects that we're doing, which is great, the gardens look great, but is it going to run our staff ragged on those?
Well, we are currently talking with a number of different vendors to provide both garden installation, as well as garden maintenance cost for our bioretention basins. We think there'll be an improvement in terms of the speed with which we can get them planted, as well as, you know, working with firms that do this for a living and, you know-
So it's mainly bioretention basins, not other types of-
Right, we're not doing, I don't know, any other than enhancements and improvements and removing dead plants and adding new, that Mike does all the time, everywhere. All the new garden areas that we're working on currently have been related to the bioretention basins. The other kind of thing that gets hidden in the numbers is that, in the past, our big push in bioretention areas has been in Ward 6, and that was paid through the speed camera money this year as part of that Ward 6 sidewalk money. Camera money this year as part of that Ward 6 sidewalk money. So it doesn't show up as a stormwater cost, it doesn't show up as a operating cost within Public Works right now. It just shows as a, you know, a installation cost through the Speed Camera Fund.
But that's changing.
Well, right, apparently so.
Okay. Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you. Some follow-up questions to some of the pilot-related questions we had earlier. If I was understanding you correctly, you were saying there's no money in this budget for a composting pilot?
Right.
So as opposed to, for example, setting aside the same amount of money as this year and continuing it, if we don't put any money in the budget, literally, the pilot will end?
Could stop. We used the sustainability money in this year, so the assumption is if that was the selected, one of the selected projects, we would use funding through that sustainability money.
Okay. I mean, I think I'd rather have, you know, money set aside for it. I just say that it's incredibly popular program. In terms of the sort of tonnage, you know, people describe, you know, they didn't realize how much kitchen waste that they had been using. They're filling up, you know, 10 to 15 pounds' worth of kitchen waste in a week, which is, you know, a significant amount of the trash volume. And I've heard the same thing from people with recycling bins, who I too would think that they weren't, they couldn't possibly be recycling anymore, but they described how, you know-
Much more.
There's nothing left in their trash can, is sort of what's coming through. But I know it's so popular that if the program goes away, we'll definitely have some well-attended meetings, at least from the pilot streets.
But my sense was not necessarily that the thought was that it might go away. It was want to base the cost on something real, and we'll get there when we have the basis for doing it.
Yeah, we're six weeks in now, so the data is still pretty new, though I think at this point, we can certainly see that it's quite popular, the kind of tonnages that we're, tonnage, the weights that we're getting per household set asides is higher than the national average. It's in the order of 10 or 12 pounds per household that's participating. Nationally, seven, eight pounds is what's generally predicted. So we're seeing high volumes, high weight.
So my sense is we'll revisit it when we've got the data.
Couple of other follow-ups. Last year, when we had you before us, we asked a number of, well, we asked politely but persistently, are you sure you don't need more help? And so I'm just asking that again, because, you know, and I know we have wonderful-
Yeah, the addition of our special projects coordinator has been a, like the sunburst coming through the window at Public Works, and she's jumped right in and made her mark already in a number of ways. So right now, it feels like it's very sane in the office these days. And again, some of that can depend on construction projects. What I'm looking at next year, Flower Avenue, together with our regular capital projects, seems like a doable workload, though, you know, there's always possibilities that something new will come up.
Okay. The last two points, they're fairly minor. I appreciate the back and forth we've done on Forest Park and management of, maintenance of Forest Park. It's an area where if we can just get a slightly higher level of service, so mowing, you know, big, you know, weeding at some point, just a little bit earlier in the summer, people would probably be a little bit happier. And I know, and I know the community's trying to figure out how to organize and help out, too. The one other thing related to Forest Park is that, and this may seem trivial, but it's a place where the basketball court is used pretty intensively by pretty big people. And the basket is placed, is right next to the gazebo and the tot playgrounds. And so I know of at least one event where a basketball hit a child, and nobody went to the hospital or anything. But I've gotten a few other queries about the same thing. And if there's any chance of moving the hoop to the other end of what is essentially a circular space, that seems like it wouldn't affect the playing activity, that would be a very small change that would-
We can certainly take-
Make people feel safer.
Take a look at that. I know when, you know, the basketball hoops that were selected and the placement of them, it's not meant to be a court, you know, they're not placed end to end, you know, it's, but people are going to do what they're going to do, and if that's where the hoop is, and that's what they're going to play. We did, I did take my staff out after getting a few emails from your constituents to Forest Park, and we are doing several enhancements related to, you know, bench replacements and some rotted wood and stuff like that. So we'll be getting it ready for spring here shortly.
Thank you. Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. I have littered really a bunch of small points, but this is an opportunity to ask about them. Some of them are expenditures that have been discussed, other ones are possibles. But the first of them, there's been a lot of discussion about dog parks. I assume that if we wanted to pursue that, then the council would shift some money around that it's not something that we're going to want to budget right now. But I did want to bring that up, that there could be associated expenses there for fences and whatever else if we do identify a city-owned location. There was another question related to dogs. I know that you're dealing with the de-icing compounds and all of that. I kind of assume that there would be only relatively minor expenses if you do end up changing the stuff that you use on the streets.
I would think that the cost would be significant. I queried my counterparts at the meeting I went to today, and I'm hoping to get a little bit of information from what, if anything, they're doing differently. Right now, pretty much what we do is standard kind of status quo.
Yeah, I came across.
We have, we're, our equipment and our trucks are set up for a salt and sand mixture 99% of the time. Several years ago, we also purchased the ability to do liquid chemical treatment, where we have this magnesium chloride solution, and we purchased the equipment that needs to go on our trucks in order to do that. It's got a very specific use. It's supposed to be more environmentally benign, but you use it in storm events where you're expecting a snow, you have advance warning, the temperature's going to drop, and you're not going to have rain. I mean, all our events this winter have been, you know, come in with rain, turns to slush, turns to snow. It's not a situation where you can use the liquid chemical treatment. If we were to identify another type, I would assume that that would also have spreading equipment and connection issues with our vehicles. So potentially, it could add some cost to just the mechanical ways in which you apply it. If it can be used with typical salt spreaders or liquid spreaders, then, you know, we could probably use our own. But if it's a different, we may have some costs associated with that.
So that's something we could be discussing some number of months from now?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I haven't gotten any traction yet on alternatives or other types of systems out there that people have found to be useful in our environment, in our climate.
Then the last of these things. I had some constituents discuss with me today litter on Piney Branch Road and some other gardens types of stuff. I know that a lot of that work is probably demand-driven or request-driven and all of that, and I have not checked out that particular situation myself before contacting you about having the gardener or arborist look at the situation. But there's also a fair amount of litter on the streets in Old Tacoma. It would be great if people weren't throwing stuff down there. I know that crews do pick up there. Councilmember Smith has previously brought up litter along Flower Avenue and so on. So there's, the situation's not as good as it could be in terms of street cleanliness. And also, we are adding a bunch of new festivals in Tacoma Junction area, and your crews have to cover those. So just asking your perception of the adequacy of the coverage for litter pickup and related types of stuff?
Well, we have a couple of things that we are currently doing now and have been doing for years. So I haven't actually gone out and done a recent evaluation of things kind of after the fact to see if we're meeting our standards. But we do a Monday morning check of all commercial areas. So our right-of-way staff go out to Old Town, the Junction, Flower Avenue, all the business areas every Monday to kind of see how things are, identify any particular problems if a bench has been broken, or something's tipped over, or there's a problem. And they do just kind of routine litter pickup. We also have the street sweeper that goes through those commercial areas in the times of March to October, three times a month. So we're hitting them fairly frequently. And then lastly, in terms of trash pickup, our sanitation guys hit the major commercial areas, as well as the parks, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
By the way, I know that there was a problem a few years ago about commercial use of the public recycling bins. I had thought that problem was resolved, but someone brought it to my attention again just a week or two ago. Do you see any problem there at this point?
I have interacted. I know we definitely did have issues with commercial establishments incurring their residents to, or their, you know-
Using the street recycling bins.
You know, you put your recycling in the container outside. I can talk with the sanitation supervisor and take a look at some of those commercial areas to see if we have adequate containers. We did, I think, two years ago, add quite a few containers to the Old Town area and several other areas.
I was thinking more about business compliance with Montgomery County and city regulations, rather than the city's adding additional collection. Anyway, maybe that's something to discuss with you later.
I could speak with the folks in code enforcement about that. I don't have a good connection with county enforcement folks for recycling, so we could try to start that up to see. I think in the past, when the issue has come up, the counties indicated that they wanted some kind of mutual agreement between the city and the county in order to do enforcement activity here in the city. And I don't think we've followed up and taken that step to get the formal agreement in place.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I have a few questions about the Flower Avenue project. We have the community meeting this month, April 23rd. Do you know from the contractor, have the suggestions from constituents about parking, has that been taken into the new design?
Yeah, we'll be seeing on April 23rd, and actually about a week before, they'll have it posted to the website, the revised site plan, based on the last community meeting, based on the stormwater consultant kind of going through their piece of it. And also, we had a very, very good meeting with folks from the county ride-on in terms of bus stop locations and consolidation, and where they'd like to see shelters. So we have some very specific recommendations that they made on those issues as well. So we'll be seeing revised plans.
So will the county put money into actually providing the bus shelters?
No.
Yeah. I had actually a conversation about that today. I need to follow up with a couple of folks. Essentially, the city had opted out of participation of having county bus shelters when we went to the bus shelters that had the advertisements on it. I need to go back and look at some of that information, but I was just talking with the representative from the county today about that. So I need to follow up a little bit on what that agreement states and what options we have.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have, one of the things we'll be talking on that same issue at the meeting coming up later this month, is to get a sense of the neighborhood as to if we were to use Signal Outdoor, our bus shelter supplier that would provide shelters, but they'd have advertising on it. Is that, you know, is that just kind of what the reaction is to the residents? Because that's how the bus shelters are everywhere else in the city.
I don't know if you're aware of the new bus shelter, I think it was in Arlington, about how it has, you know, the times of the buses.
This million-dollar bus shelter?
I'm not suggesting a million dollars, but, I mean, is there any way that, are you thinking about any bus shelters that are more modern, let's say?
At this point, what we've been, what we'll probably lay out there is a kind of option that goes from, here's what we can get for no cost with our Signal Outdoors. Here's kind of the latest, greatest that's available. And I don't think we would ever assume to go quite that high tech. So it would be just a nice shelter that we've seen, you know, and that matches our streetscape standards. You know, we're trying to tie into places where we've already developed streetscape standards, like in Ethan Allen Avenue and New Hampshire Avenue. So we'll be taking a look at those as kind of models. And those are the options. And always, the issue is money. You can either put a few shelters in that cost a lot of money, or you can put more shelters in that cost less money. So it's going to kind of be one of those balancing acts that we get to once we have the full design developed.
Okay. When do you anticipate that the design will be completed?
Well, after this meeting, there will, I would expect at least one more fairly detailed community meeting. There's also the stormwater, kind of onsite residential-level stormwater meetings, two of them that will take place. So I think that we'll be fairly engaged throughout the summer, and then towards the end of the summer, early fall, we should have pretty close to final plans.
Okay. Some residents at the meeting mentioned stormwater issues at Kinnabek and Flower. Do you know if a plan has been put in place to fix that?
I don't remember the specifics of what the issue was until I go back.
Water cascades down Kinnabek whenever it rains.
Yeah. I'll have to look into that. I don't have a specific answer.
Just a couple more points. Regarding a trash can on, at the bus stop at Flower and Wabash, do you know if that was ever placed?
I don't. I know we made the request to the sanitation folks. There is one at Domer, and there should have been one at Wabash, but I'll take a look and see.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
I know Councilmember Schultz has a question, but I wanted to, I know that Councilmember Mayo has to leave very shortly.
Well, and can I just jump in before we finish? You've opened Flower Avenue. I was kind of planning to talk about that with the, when we got to the capital budget discussion, but you'll see on what I've provided to you kind of in that attachment page that goes through each of the capital budget items. The amount of funding that we have in this year's budget is a very rudimentary level of funding that will get us just a certain portion of the work done. And if the council is at all interested in expanding that, we'll need to take a look at that.
And what's the 20%?
What you're looking at is a street list. That's a different topic.
Oh, I thought you were going to that one.
No, this one came with your, came in your packet. It's the attachment to your blue page.
Gotcha. Anybody have any questions on that sheet?
If we're going to jump over to capital, I mean, what you see there again, and I think everybody knows it, I was probably the last to know, that the ADA and new sidewalk and traffic calming work are now out of the Speed Camera and into the general fund. We've requested a similar funding to what we had this current year, $600,000 for the ADA work. The area where we would logically follow from where we stopped would be that southern corner of the city, which would basically be Elm Avenue, Eastern Avenue, New Hampshire Avenue, that bottom triangle. We've got ourselves up to that point, so we would continue that sweep and complete the work there. For the new sidewalk and traffic calming, those are all projects that have either been previously designed and in the queue for construction, or have gone through the public vetting process and moved into the design request phase. So we have the Prince George's Avenue sidewalk construction in the 6,800 block, as well as the traffic calming construction in that neighborhood. The construction for the 7,500 Jackson Avenue sidewalk, which went through a very rigorous design process earlier in last year. The Pine Crest sidewalks, they've made a request for six different sidewalks in a variety of neighborhoods down there. The Boyd Avenue sidewalk design, again, we went through the vetting process with the community for that.
7,500 Jackson, is that the block up from Sligo Creek Parkway?
Yes, it's between Lincoln and Sligo Creek Parkway. We expect to do the 7,300 block of Jackson Avenue, which is the only section on that three blocks that does, those two don't have sidewalks. The 7,300 block of Jackson Avenue is going to be done this year, and it's being done with Safe Routes to School, excuse me, Safe Routes to School money. So we anticipate that being completed fairly soon, or at least before the end of June. Also on that list is the Flower and Sligo Creek Parkway design. Tim, you'd asked about that. That's a park and planning property that we've had an initial meeting with them that they were quite interested in, the idea being that we could do a traffic calming program there that would reduce the amount of pavement, tighten up the turns, and potentially also integrate some stormwater management in an area that's right on the shores of Sligo Creek and where the stormwater is definitely not managed now. Flower and Jackson Avenue, the raised crosswalk request that we got from the neighborhood through a petition process, and then the Erskine Avenue traffic calming construction. We're about to start the design process for Erskine Avenue traffic calming, so this is assuming that design reaches a conclusion, and then we move into a construction phase.
Now, what is the $45,000 based on at this? Is this just a sort of a hypothetical number?
Hypothetical, based on kind of similar amounts we've spent for similar lengths of street. It's not necessarily assuming a sidewalk piece to that, but just the traffic calming itself. So depending on how extensive the traffic calming plan comes out, there could be the potential for sidewalks there as well within that funding.
Because the sidewalks have already, for Erskine, have already been designed-
Right.
-by RKK.
Yeah.
They just got postponed because, as you know, the residents said, let's do the traffic calming at the same time and before we build the sidewalks. And so I don't want the sidewalks not to get built. And that, you know, it's only, what, two, two blocks? Maybe three?
Yeah, very short blocks. It could be that there's additional funding needed for that. At this point, I don't want to presuppose what the end result of a process is going to be, so I just kind of-
Of course, no, of course not.
Try to split the middle. I've mentioned the Flower Avenue, Green Street. The street rehabilitation, that was the list I handed out to you. And again, I want to emphasize, this is a preliminary list. The city engineer was very reluctant to give it to me because he didn't want to be held accountable if something were to change. But as you know, we had a system to evaluate the streets that was put in place a couple of years ago, where we used the services of a company called Enter Info, and they use a video van- a video van and cameras to identify street conditions. And so this is strictly going through their report, based on what you see there is the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index. So it's just running to the next set on the list and getting to an estimate of $500,000. There could be reasons why the streets listed there aren't appropriate for street work. We haven't checked with utilities yet. We don't know if there's a conflict in, related to utility work planned. There could also be other conditions that would, you know, make us recommend to move it to a different year if we've got another project planned. So this is just a rough sense of what we're looking at right now. If everything remained equal, those would be the streets that we would be getting to. This is the second year that we've been able to use the full $500,000 funding that was identified as the funding level needed. Street light upgrade is basically self-explanatory. It's the funds that we use for resident request, street light upgrades, either changes in wattage of an existing bulb or adding streetlights to an area that doesn't currently have it. And then lastly, on the back, I don't know if you've ever been up to Public Works to see our mulch area. We used to have a reinforced chain link fence and poles, and that's sadly inadequate for the job of what we ask it to do. So through the construction process, a lot of that fencing was removed. What my staff would like to do is use those precast concrete ginormous jersey barriers, similar to what we use with our salt dome. They're very cost-effective, quite sturdy, really easy to install. It's a project where we could prepare the base, and they come in and in a day have this thing put up. So it's really a very attractive option for us. And this would provide a section of eight-foot and 12-foot walls on a L-shaped corner of our mulch area, so we could contain the mulch within there, allow us to build the pile as high as we need, and basically keep it on-site and keep it enclosed. So that, that is a new item. It's not something we've had before, hence why it's in the general fund. It's also something that, once it's in place, you don't expect to replace it in 50 years. It's something that provided, no truck barrels through it. It should remain as is. Never say never, but.
Okay. And I just wanted to check on one thing before Councilmember Mail has to leave, since it involves him, because I see we now have a policy on possibly naming rights on streets because there's now a Mail Avenue. On page 115 of the...
Oh, was it supposed to be Major?
That's great. Thank you guys.
Yeah. Second line on page 115, now Mail Avenue at Parkview Towers.
Where is it in your, I don't have page numbers, so...
It's in the capital.
Oh.
CIP, Stormwater Management.
Oh, is it our stormwater list?
Yeah. So I thought, well, now we have naming rights.
Yeah. Well, and I don't know if you have any questions about the stormwater stuff. I can quickly go through that before.
I can just come back.
He wanted to share the wealth.
Can I just follow up with a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
Or comments? I really appreciate seeing the Flower and Sligo Creek design in there. And I may want to talk further with colleagues about whether we want to try to put some construction money into, but I'll talk to you about that first, Daryl. But it's, you know, you all know from, I think, at least two councils ago, that the street Flower Avenue is interested in traffic calming. And what happens now is cars come speeding up Sligo Creek, they take that turn as fast as they can and head right up the hill. And so part of this is about slowing people down when entering the neighborhood. And then, as Daryl mentioned, a big part of it is about the runoff reduction potential. It's a huge area of concrete right next to the stream. So I really appreciate seeing that on there. I wasn't clear where the $190,000 was in the budget for the Sustainability Initiative?
It's in the Public Works Administration budget as a contract line or a subcontract line. Yeah.
And I just, this is a comment for future budgets, but when we have the contract lines, we've got the composting pilot, there might be some way to visually or narratively describe some of these initiatives that make them come out more visibly. We've talked about them tonight, that's fine, but I just, I had a harder time getting through this section and figuring out where some of these special projects essentially are. And I think that's it. That's all the stuff that I need to cover right now, but I definitely appreciate the sidewalks and of course, all the work that your department has done in planning those sidewalks and some of those meetings. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, back to Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I have, just sort of go through this page by page, a bunch of questions. Talking about maintaining city property. I park regularly when I'm visiting here, the building, in the police lot. And I notice that it almost never gets any cleaning attention. The gutters in there are filled with cigarette butts and trash, and it just stays there for weeks and months on end, and the striping is disappearing, so it's hard to know where to park and where you can't park and all of that. And I just, I realize it's sort of a hidden entrance into our building, mostly used by staff and police, but it does, it does, it just needs cleaning.
And I haven't noticed in the last couple of days, but did you get to...
I don't know. They're supposed to do it on a weekend, the back lot sweeper.
Yeah, because the back lot, the curb is full of stuff that's going into the storm water inlet.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the problems we have in the front lot is we can't use our sweeper. It's just too tight, and we can't go under the bridge, so it all has to be done manually.
Right. But I mean, when you come in the entrance, there's still leaves blowing in from last fall. So I'm thinking, you know, that's unnecessary. Let's see. Oh, on page 60, under management objectives, I sort of see sometimes where we have our performance measures, and then management objectives, kind of a disconnect. For example, under management objectives, there's ensure that at least 90% of the city's fleet is operational at all times. Return calls for service are less than 2%. Further down, track fuel use by vehicle, determine miles per gallon. But none of those are measured under the chart at the bottom. And I just was wondering, do we meet those management objectives?
We exceed them.
Oh, you exceed them?
If I could follow up on that, though. One of the things that, one of, my new staff is also very helpful with, Emily, the management assistant, is just beginning the process of going around to each of the departments and working with their performance measures, their management objectives, so that the information that was, will eventually be shown in the budget, but certainly is shown in the quarterly reports, is tied together and makes sense for those kinds of things. So I think, you know, it's our intention to have these things make more sense and to answer the same question.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, for those items, the equipment maintenance supervisor does an annual report where he prints out from his computer software program, all the maintenance work done, each work ticket, and the number of vehicles that were out, and how long, based on our total fleet. So we calculate what we've gotten.
Well, you know, I know that we do get annual reports from various departments during the year, but the problem with that is, is that we don't remember that data when we're looking at the budget. And, you know, and we may be just looking at an annual report from your department thinking, oh, that's something we ought to do when budget time comes around. So I think what Suzie said will help integrate that so that you just carry that data straight into the budget. Where am I here? I can skip that page. Oh, I guess, same with, on page 62, respond to pothole reports or emergency requests within 24 hours, and respond to non-emergency service requests within two weeks of receipt. Is that something that you guys are generally...
That's something we don't track. It's just our interior goal. So as soon as we get a phone call, the supervisor gets the information and knows he has 24 hours. We don't have a system to track.
Things like that. Also, on page 64, where you've got tons of trash, tons of recycling, tons of yard waste, those are, the numbers would be more helpful, I think, if we could understand trends, which direction things are going. It looks like in the three periods there that they're fairly stable, but we know that over a longer period, there's probably some pretty promising trends there, particularly in the recycling thing. And I don't know whether that's something we could get a better, maybe in next year's budget package. I don't need to see it. I'm not asking for it this time because that's not going to change our decision-making with regard to the budget, but it just, because the numbers by themselves, without a context, I mean, for example, when we're talking about numbers of square footage of sidewalk that were constructed, or lengths of curb, there are like, you know, numbers, they say, oh, that's a lot of, that's a lot of curb, but I don't know what it is relative to. In the gardening division, there's a lot of money spent relative to wages on contractual labor. And I know that Mike has a crew of part-time people that he calls on to go out there and work those gardens. I've seen them in traffic circles. Is there any way to shift more of that into the wages side and reduce the contractual part, if you know what I mean?
Well, not without losing a lot of hours in terms of labor hours. So the way we currently have that division set up, there's two full-time people.
Right.
Any other labor hours is done based on temporary contractual services. And if we were to bring someone in-house, it would result in less hours for the same amount of cost.
Oh, okay. So in other words, it's basically seasonal work?
Yes.
And it has to be, sort of?
Yeah. We have a process for bringing temps in, and how long we keep them in, and then when we have to rotate them out. And each of the divisions that use temps, particularly in the gardens division, they have, you know, what they do in the spring, what they do in the summer, what they do in the fall, all very different. So they have a different number of temps that they have in, they have different activities that they're doing.
With different skills.
Yeah.
I'll be darned. Okay, I didn't appreciate that. By the way, when you talk about the number of gardens created, what constitutes a garden? And how many gardens do we have?
I could get you that information. Mike keeps a rolling list that he regularly updates for me.
It's got to be growing, because...
Yeah, for us, it's any enhanced planting area, any place where we've, you know, created a garden. Size is not a limiting factor, so...
And you answered my question earlier about the bioretention and how those are going to be taken care of.
Well, we're still trying to work those out. You know, it's a kind of a learning curve for us.
Yeah, I noticed that you've built like six of the 15 that you're going to build in Ward 6, and the planting on those is, I guess, waiting for something. I'm not sure. I have no idea.
Yeah, only two are planted, and the rest are remaining. They've been waiting on the gardens timeframe, and I think we're now looking at bringing in contractual companies to get them done.
That's what you were talking about a little while ago. Okay. That's it. So I'm willing to move on to this, on this, can I ask a question about the street resurfacing?
You said that was it.
Well, I'm sorry, but I didn't mean to say that. I want to retract that sentence.
You're going to have to pay for that.
All right. I'll owe you a Girl Scout cookie.
It's going to be a lot more expensive than that.
Last year, Jackson Avenue in Ward 6, of the 1100 block of Jackson, had been on your repaving thing, and then it was withdrawn because the WSSC had said that they were going to do it, and they've been sort of leading you and the city around...
For years.
For years, the circle, because they say they're going to put in a new main there, but then they never tell you when.
Both Jackson Avenue and Hammond Avenue are both in that situation.
Is there any hope?
It's still on their list to be done. It's still within the project work that they've provided us, so we're still expecting that work to be done. We haven't gotten any permit requests from WSSC for that particular project.
But I see Hammond Avenue has gotten onto this...
Oh, yeah.
List.
And that's probably my error. I knew I took one off. Let's see, Jackson to Kirkland. Yeah, that probably, that isn't one that we know the WSSC is working, working on, so it probably will be...
Scratch that one off.
Probably will be delayed.
But the other ones in my ward, Kingwood and Kirkland, are good, we think will still...
Yeah, as far as we know, the information we have to date, there aren't any WSSC or other utility projects on those streets. But prior to any street work, before we start our fiscal year, we'll send a letter out to the utilities with our list and hopefully get them to pay attention and let us know where they're working.
Thank you.
Okay. All we've got left is stormwater. Anybody have any questions on stormwater? There's only two pages.
There was some questions about changes that would have vastly, greatly impacted the stormwater collections from large institutions. That stuff didn't happen? That was some kind of legislative change?
Yeah, yeah. No.
That was Tom Harker.
Good.
Thankfully not.
Big changes in how we collect.
Yeah.
We worked hard on that one.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware of what we're planning in terms of our major capital projects for the stormwater funds for next year. There are three major capital projects, all bioretention-related. One at Maple Avenue and Maplewood Avenue, and if you drive through that area, you'll see the erosion along the edge of the college there. So it'll be a plan to restore that green strip between the sidewalk and the curb, as well as put in two, potentially three, bioretention areas.
What page are you on?
Pardon me? Oh, on the stormwater.
Is this the, oh, you're on your sheet?
I'm on my cover sheet.
It's also on the CIP on page 114.
Yeah, the capital budget list has a, has a list of the capital projects. It doesn't include the other stormwater projects. If you look at the Budget Work Session cover sheet for stormwater, that's kind of what I'm working off of now. The second major capital project is a project at Larch Avenue and Glazewood Avenue. Again, it's a kind of an ideal location for a bioretention area, as it's kind of a valley between two slopes where we have a lot of historic water flows, and there are, there is a stream nearby. And then lastly, Flower Avenue and Cherry Avenue. It's a dead end off of Flower Avenue where there's a lot of erosion directly into Sligo Creek from this little stub of a, of a street. So we want to do some slope stabilization on the edge of the road, as well as try to create a protected area at the bottom of the pavement to keep some of the sediment and erosion from going into the creek. In addition to that, we have what we call repair projects that aren't identified in the capital budget, but are still fairly significant projects there, where systems currently exist that we've either identified a defect, a broken pipe, or something like that, or we want to enhance something within an existing system. So the major projects that we've got planned for next year in that line is on Fourth Avenue, also at what we call the Baltimore Avenue Culvert, a paper street off of Baltimore Avenue between Philadelphia. There's a very large intake area, for lack of a better word, with wing walls, concrete wing walls, and a big pipe and a grate. We have to do quite frequent maintenance of that area just to make sure that pipe doesn't get blocked. There's a house very close nearby that's in the flood plain there, and if that pipe gets blocked, the water would come over the, come over the concrete wall and potentially cause a problem there. So we monthly check that. So what we're going to do is create a situation out there where we can put a cage over the, over the inlet opening and buy a little more maintenance time in terms of controlling deposition of leaves and sticks and branches, and basically create a, create a little more protection for that pipe so it won't get blocked. So there's a weir structure that we'll be installing out there. Hayward Avenue and Larch Avenue, this is a project I'm really quite excited about. Some residents raised my attention to this a few months back. Again, it's a kind of typical stormwater outfall into an existing old eroded stream bank on the other side of Sligo Creek Parkway that then gets piped under the Sligo Creek Parkway itself and into Sligo Creek. And the, the bank is full of invasive species. It's eroding badly. It's just kind of falling apart. So we basically need to go back in, take care of that streambank slope in a more environmentally enticing way, because right now it's fairly ugly. You know, imbricated walls and whatnot, similar to what we did on the New York Avenue outfall when we went in and rebuilt that. And then there's also a pathway that comes down from the end of Colby Avenue, and there's quite a bit of erosion now along that path, and it's fairly hazardous for any but the super-able-bodied to walk. So we're looking forward to working with the community to try to improve that situation in the creek and make that pathway a little more usable, and try to do some slope stabilization and railings there so that people can use that without worrying about slipping or falling or, you know, make their accessway into the park a little more attractive. And then at the base of Public Avenue, I mean Ritchie Avenue and the Public Works driveway, I was talking with the city engineer, and we got the idea for this project. We basically are controlling everything stormwater-wise on the... We basically are controlling everything stormwater-wise on the flat part of the Public Works facility, property with the two stormwater filtration systems that we have in. But anything that goes down our driveway out to Ritchie Avenue is just working its way directly into, into Sligo Creek. So what we're going to try to do there, there is an inlet just below our driveway, so we want to try to create a situation where we can collect the water off the driveway, put it through a filter before it gets into the, in the inlet, and we think we'll be able to do that along the slope beside our driveway before it gets to the, to the street. So that's the last project there. As you may know, we do a video inspection of the stormwater pipes, third, a third to a quarter of the system every year, so we'll be continuing that work. This year, we're working through Sub Basin 4. Whatever we don't complete, we'll finish next fiscal year, as well as Sub Basin 2. And then lastly, we have put funding in there to continue our work with the Center for Watershed Protection and the illicit discharge project that we started with them this year, and they were able to get a couple of things identified, and we're looking forward to working with them to continue up that Maple Avenue drainage area and then kind of develop and build our illicit discharge program with their partnership. So they've provided proposal for us for that work, and we're ready to sign on to that at the beginning of the fiscal year. So those are the major stormwater projects. Of course, all the rest of the normal stormwater things that we do, we'll continue, you know, regular maintenance and identification, you know, identifying any, any problems, but those are the kind of major construction projects.
And I've just got two quick questions on public works-related things. One, where you have in the CIP, you've got pay stations for the old town parking area. My reaction was yay.
Yeah, that's actually a planning project, so Roz Grigsby will talk to you about that.
Oh, okay.
That's not my baby.
All right. Well, it said it was under streets and sidewalks.
Yeah, we're hoping to use that at the city lot as the first location.
Good. And the other thing was, just a quick question on the FY15 allocation. There's $275,000 for replacement of the underground fuel tanks. I thought you just went through a whole process of whether you were going to have to do that as part of the public works rehab and decided not to, but now we're going to have to?
Well, yeah, we didn't include it as part of the renovation project with the Public Works Department, just basically because of the cost, and we put funding in the equipment replacement reserve for the tank replacement.
Okay, so we knew all along that that was going to have to be done very soon?
Yeah, I think those tanks were installed in 1988, so, yeah, there, it's time.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on public works, stormwater, CIP for those? Everybody ready to go home?
Yeah. Thank you.
If you've got any requests for additional information and potential reconciliation items, I would advise talking with the deputy city, acting city manager, and we'll maybe have a little time for any more of those on Monday.
Right. We won't have any budget work session on Monday, but I'd love to hear your comments, and there were a number of suggestions for more information, and I'll try to have those by next week, Thursday.
Great. Thanks. We're done.